Good evening. I'm Dr. Dale McGee and on behalf of my colleagues on the school committee and the central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our school committee meeting of March 14th. Our meetings are televised by Shrewsbury Media Connection, thanks to the help of Mr. Mark Sherret today. And in addition to this broadcast, our meetings will be rebroadcast on Channel 329 between now and the time of our next scheduled meeting, and then move to the online archive. During tonight's meeting, we'll hear from the student advisory committee. We'll vote on policy regarding staff travel. We'll hear a policy presentation on harassment. We will hear a presentation on extended daycare programs. And then we will vote on fees and tuition rates for FY '19. We'll discuss our response to an inquiry from the field reuse committee. And we will have a presentation on developing a dashboard to help us in public communications regarding school performance. We encourage members of the public to provide the committee and the community with information and points of view. This is included as a first item in our agenda. Today, no one has expressed interest in speaking. And we'll move to the second item, which is chairpersons and members reports. Members, anything to report today?
No.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I'm going to keep it brief because I know a lot of the topics I would normally share of the student advisory committee is going to be speaking to momentarily. I did just send out a written superintendent's update yesterday. There's a whole variety of student successes that we're very proud of, everything from robotics to athletics, speech and debate, visual arts, performing arts. And we're very proud of the work that our students are doing. You'll also hear from the student advisory committee entirely about today's earlier exercises at the high school, and then also as well as Oak and Sherwood relative to the national student walkout that is featured prominently in the news today. I am especially proud of the work that our principals at each of those schools, as well as the staff and the parents, and especially the students with whom they consulted. I think the plans went very well in each building. Overall, our strategy is extraordinarily respectful, as well as really got a strong message across around honoring the victims of Parkland, Florida, school shooting, as well as focusing on the issue of school safety. But again, we'll hear from our student leadership group momentarily about that. And that is superintendent's report.
Excellent. And we are going to table until the next meeting a student recognition for the boys' track team. They will appear at another meeting. Today, we're going to next have a report from the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee. This committee was formed under a Education Reform Act, and districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. And they meet with us during the year to advise us as to issues that are relevant to the students. Today, we have Benjamin George, Maya McCollum, Erica Hanlon, Paulina Rascosi, and Priscilla Singh. Welcome.
Thank you. As always, thank you for having us, except this time on our home turf. We'll go down the line and introduce ourselves, you can put a face of the name. My name is Benjamin George. I'm the chairperson and a senior.
My name's Erica Hanlon, and I'm a junior.
I'm Priscilla Singh, and I'm a junior.
Paulina Rascosi, junior.
And Maya McCollum, senior.
The first item on our agenda is student accomplishments.
Shrewsbury High School students are continually achieving success through their athletics, acting, and other extracurriculars. At this point in the year, the winter athletic season has come to an end, and the spring season is quickly approaching. In these past few weeks, athletes have seen a great deal of success, whether it be at competitive hockey tournaments, the gymnastics league championship, swimming sectionals, or the state track meet. Additionally, the boys' four-by-two-hundred track relay team placed 13th at Nationals this past weekend. The basketball game on February 13th included a halftime ceremony to recognize SHS students for completing our 100,000-hour community service goal that has been in place since the 2011-2012 school year. We were lucky enough to be joined by elected representatives. We'll be excited to see all of the athletic achievements to come this spring.
The All States musical auditions took place recently at Shrewsbury High School on January 20th. 1,105 students from over 200 schools around the state auditioned for the various all-state bands, orchestras, and choirs. Of the 12 Shrewsbury High School students that auditioned, four students made it into the all-state choir: Matt Slaughter, Angie Rezouk, Karini Shenmogum, and Aaron Matoszo, who all performed on March 2nd in Boston. They spent three days with renowned retired professor Dr. Archibek, concluding in a performance that was held at Symphony Hall. This year's competition play was punk rock and won many awards. The cast and crew advanced to semifinals. Several members of this team, including John Barrett, Michaela Kelly, Sam Brownstein, Michaela Mack, Aaron Backen, and Emily Bran, were given All-Star awards acknowledging their hard work. Also, congratulations to our theater department, who celebrated their 50th anniversary of the musical All Shook Up, which was performed on March 8th, 9th, and 10th, selling out two of the three performances. Shrewsbury High School's chuckle bus improv troupe had an improv showcase on January 27th. There was a great turnout to see the creative and goofy skits put on, and the troupe is currently preparing for their second showcase in the spring.
The Shrewsbury High School robotics and speech and debate teams are well into their competitive seasons. The robotics team just finished their build season, a period of six weeks where students worked to create a robot that they will ultimately compete with. Their first competition was the 2nd and 3rd of March, where they earned the prestigious chairman's award. This award allows them to move on to the upcoming district competition. The speech and debate team has also been keeping busy. Eighteen members qualified for the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament, which is held in June, and a whopping 29 members of the team qualified for the National Catholic Forensic League Tournament, which is held Memorial Day weekend in May. We wish both of these teams the best of luck at their upcoming competitions.
The next item on our agenda is student events.
Whether it be traveling together to different nations, or coming together at home to support important causes, students have fostered a strong sense of unity at SHS. This spring, there are many exciting travel opportunities for Shrewsbury High students. 112 choir students will be traveling to Disney this weekend, March 15th to 18th, for some amazing experiences with real Disney performers in a Disney Sings workshop, as well as performing some Disney songs at the marketplace stage for the public to listen to. This April vacation, 18 upperclassmen learning Mandarin will be traveling a little farther than Disney. These students will be traveling to Beijing, China, where they will be staying with host families to experience the life of a Chinese high school student. In addition to attending school with their host, students will be immersed into the Chinese culture through visiting all of the must-see attractions, like the Forbidden City, the Great Wall, Beijing Zoo, and much more.
Put on by the Black History Committee at Shrewsbury High School, the Black History Month Assembly took place on February 13th and included many musical performances from various students and groups, a short film produced by the SHS Film Club, and a reading of the winning entry of the writing contest. Their theme for this year was Step Up, Stand Up, Speak Up, and their assembly was equally moving and motivating, and reminded us that one person can make a difference. We owe a huge thanks to the Black History Committee for their wonderful assembly.
After the Parkland tragedy, the SAC, student council, and class officers came together to organize an event which would give a respect for the victims and call for student unity and advocacy at SHS. This morning, over 1,200 students participated in the SHS student-led walkout. Each victim of the shooting's name was read by a different member of the SHS community and was followed by 17 seconds of silence after each one.
After this act of solidarity, there are opportunities for students to express their thoughts and feelings about the event. Students wrote on message boards to anonymously ask questions or express their opinions. Many students signed a banner with the words "Never Again," as we pledged to our part to keep our school safe. Flyers were also passed out with the information of how to contact our elected representatives to express our thoughts about this national issue. The large body of students remained solemn and respectful of the occasion and thoughtfully contributed to the event. Today, SHS should be showed their unity and determination to create a stronger, safer school and society. The next item on our agenda and the final agenda item is planning for the future. Whether in our cafeteria or in our classrooms, SHS is working to provide new courses for students. As a follow-up to town meeting and our last presentation, SAC has been working on addressing students' requests for more vegetarian options at lunch. In response, SAC met with lunch staff and administration to assess the current options. To understand the level of interest in such options, SAC created a survey asking if students would be interested in more vegetarian options at lunch, and if they would like to work with student council and SAC on creating these options. Initial analysis of the results indicate our group of students interested. We expect to meet with these group of students soon.
SHS students are excited to start making important choices for next year. Course selection will take place in the coming weeks as students have decided what classes to take next year and gotten teacher recommendations. Guidance has visited classrooms, helping students with the process and informing them of new electives. Next week, students will register for courses with their guidance counselors. As you know, several exciting programs and courses have been introduced for the upcoming year, and student reactions have been positive. Rising juniors have the option to take capstone exhibition, in which they work on an ongoing project during the second semester of junior and first semester of senior year. And 30 students have already expressed interest at an initial info meeting. Rising juniors and seniors are also excited about Foundations for Physical Education, a new gym class that offers peer connections with the Life Skills Program, and about cooperative work-study, where students can receive credit for working during the school day. We have a number of new classes next year, including Social Science Electives, Sports in America, Exploring Family History, and Pop Culture, in addition to Chinese One and Research Methods Precalculus. Research Methods Precalculus was added to accommodate for sophomores that are taking Research Methods Chemistry but have already co-studied Advanced Math One, which is a growing option due to the current use of Alex in classrooms.
That concludes our agenda for tonight, and we are open to any questions that you may have.
Thanks a lot. Great presentation from colleagues. Jason.
With regard to today's events memorializing the victims at Parkland and also in conjunction with some of the walkouts that were planned nationally, I'm curious both to get your personal reactions to the event, how you thought it went today, but also want to ask you the question, do you feel that students who wanted to express something about these events, do you feel that they had a chance to be heard?
So personally, I think there was a lot of, I guess, anticipation and apprehension, I think, from the student body, and I think that specifically student government, like how this will go. Specifically, with that many students coming down to the gymnasium and participating in this event, I think the school was respectful. It was successful. There was a wave of positivity, I think, that came out of it, that from both faculty and students that I talked to following the event. And I think it went really well. I think that during the event, we had the opportunity, we placed two art boards. So I don't know if you've been to the art show. Those art boards were placed, and there were two of them. One said "thoughts," so it was very open-ended, and the other one said "questions." And students placed Post-it notes on those, and they were very thought-provoking, self-reflective Post-it notes. So that was an opportunity for students to see both a wide array of perspectives that the student body had. And I think, at the end of the day, people were respectful of each other, and it was a sense of unity, I think, that the student body had.
And I think personally, it was also really moving. We were standing down there, kind of after we had already set up, and I remember, I think it was Erica, she was like, "Is anybody gonna come?" And then Priscilla was just like, turn around, and there was just like hundreds of students filing in, very respectful. It was just amazing to see like such unity in the student body, I think. That's good. I think there's always, I'm so sorry. I think there's always like an apprehension that with a large body of students, how it's gonna turn out. But the atmosphere that was created in the gym with the help of like student government, everyone filed in, it was very respectful. The atmosphere was very solemn. There wasn't any, you know, giggles or little conversations. When we were doing the 17 seconds of silence, actually just pin-drop silence. It was really, really respectful.
I was very impressed that we, there were about 1,200 students. I was really impressed that we were all able to stay silent during that time, because I know that a lot of student government and like student council were concerned that people would be disrespectful and just be there to miss class. But I really felt that this was one of the first times it's really felt like everyone in that room was united as like Shrewsbury High School students, and we all were there for the same purpose. And I also felt that a lot of people who were questioning coming to the gym to do the walkout originally changed their mind after going to it and seeing what we had planned, and they really found it to be impactful.
The last thing I'll say is just that I think while we did definitely try at the actual event to have people get the opportunity to express their thoughts and feelings, we also understood that, you know, there's kind of a limit to what we can do at the high school. So what we really wanted is that students to become advocates within their school and within our national community. So what we tried to do is we passed out flyers that had contact information for state representatives, various national leaders, because if they want to continue to advocate for what they believe in outside of our school and on the national level, we wanted to provide them with the resources that they could do that.
I also think one thing to add was, in preparation for this event, there was a lot of planning, a lot of meeting with teachers, administration, a lot of students met. There was a lot of discussion about how the event was going to happen, and I think the event was, I think, went really well and actually satisfied a lot of people's expectations. And it was a speech that we gave during the tribute, and then that was happening in the gymnasium. And then one note is that we also had a separate event that was strictly 17 minutes of silence that happened in the dance room. About 114 students participated in that. That was separate from the gymnasium, as some students felt that they strictly wanted to do a reflection for each minute for each of the victims of Parkland. That was also did happen, that we accommodated for those.
Thank you. Aaron.
So to follow up on that, the message boards that you talked about, will those thoughts and opinions be able to be conversation starters further on? Like, is there a next step?
So we originally planned to have a town hall-type forum, town meeting, with Mr. Bizilow. Unfortunately, with the early release day we had, that it was planned for that Wednesday after school, we're in discussion with the administration to have that come up in the future.
Yep. Thank you.
Another question. I just have a couple. The trip to China is such an interesting event. Do the students who go on that give any sort of presentation to others?
Yes. Actually, three of us are going.
Yeah, like that? Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if we're presenting to our own school, but I know we're making a presentation to present to the students there and show them about Shrewsbury High School. And last fall, like two years ago, we had the opportunity to host some students from their high school here. So I know me and Paulina participated in that, and Maya. So they presented to us when they were here, and now we'll share about Shrewsbury High to them.
Do you get any insights, or you don't know yet, but I mean, are there any insights into what life is like there, what the politics is like, what, you know, I mean, China's on the news every night.
With our like limited grasp of Chinese and their limited grasp of English, we don't get into too many like political discussions with them. That being said, I know when like we had students come here, there was kind of a lot of differences in like, oh, what are your parents' jobs? What's it like when you go to school? What are kind of the values and things that you believe in? So I expect when we go to China, we're gonna kind of similarly see that, and I think it's gonna be even more of an opportunity for us to kind of see, this is how people live their lives. This is what, like, this isn't what you read in the news, this is what it's actually like to be there. So that's real.
It seems like sharing that knowledge would be a really good idea for the student body. The other question, can you give me a picture at all of what the work-study programs are gonna look like? What's your impression is how they're gonna go out? What's the content?
In terms of the like cooperative work-study?
Yeah, what are you doing?
Yeah, so I was talking to a few students that might be interested in doing so next year, and it's kind of a lot of seniors that have kind of already fulfilled the classes they want in terms of like college majors, or have already kind of realized that maybe they don't want to go to college. And I think it's gonna be a good opportunity for students from both of those groups, where they feel that, you know, the classes that they're learning, like, it might be more useful for them to be out in the work worlds. And I think that there's, we've already said, you know, it has to be like an official job, you know, getting paid and such like that. And I think a lot of kids are taking it really seriously as an option, just to kind of... Another interesting thing is that they're allowed to work the hours like after school, like if the job is from like 4 to 8 or something, like it doesn't have to necessarily be in the school day that they're working those hours, which I also think is a good option in terms of like if their job doesn't happen to have those, like, those hours.
And is, are there any concerns regarding availability of courses, people getting locked out of courses?
We will have probably more information if course selection is actually happening, I believe. I was in guidance actually today, and they're still signing up for courses, so I assume we will have more information on that down the line. I really haven't discussed that.
All right, very good. Thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Thanks for your report. I just wanted to underscore, I did attend the exercises this morning here, and these student leaders and the other student leaders from the student council and others who assisted them did an extraordinary job of claiming that someone to emphasize this was a student-led and student-organized activity. I know that you consulted with Mr. Bizilow and the administration, but when Mr. Bizilow and I were standing in the back of the fieldhouse, this was student-led, and I agree that the student body was extraordinarily respectful. And I think it was really thoughtful that you provided an opportunity where students who clearly had different viewpoints, perhaps, on some of the issues, yet were united around, obviously, the issue of honoring those who were the victims at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, both students and staff, as well as the idea that obviously a school should be safe. Those are universal moral issues, those aren't political issues. There are political issues in terms of how one thinks that might be best achieved. I think that some of the language that you all used when you were presenting to being clear that people should study the issues, come to their own conclusions, advocate for what they think is right, but that unification around the idea that our school should be safe places for students, and that to me was particularly inspiring. I thought it was very poignant. And I'm not sure if you mentioned, but there were posters of the different victims around the fieldhouse that I think a lot, I noticed a lot of students were reflecting upon that, and it was very impactful. We know this is a very impactful event. This is unfortunately, you know, one in a series of these tragedies going back 20 years, but this was the first one that's happened in the era of live video feeds through Twitter or other social media that I think, in my sense, has really deeply impacted students, not only here in Shrewsbury, but around the country, to see that kind of firsthand. That's something historically that really hasn't happened prior to recent times, where people had that kind of insight into the actual horror of going through that. So I think the level of empathy that I'm seeing from our students around what their peers in Parkland went through and wanted to do something to whatever it is that they choose, it might be to make schools safer. I also just want to mention for the school committee's benefit that, similar to what you reported, we had hundreds of students at Oak Middle School observing 17 minutes of silence in the gymnasium there who chose again to do so, and that was the same term they used, that you could hear a pin-drop. And you recall, being seventh, eighth graders, that's really difficult for seventh and eighth graders to achieve. And similarly, it was something that was a little more broadly done in their theme of kindness, but also a moment of reflection. And Sherwood Middle School, what I'm told by Dr. Bizilow, that that went very well also. So I want to commend you, but also the students at Oak and Sherwood as well. I think that, again, part of our responsibility is to help prepare students for a future where they're advocates, they're engaged citizens, and I think I am heartened by what I'm seeing, not only here in Shrewsbury, but across the country in terms of students stepping, standing up with a voice, regardless of what particular political beliefs they might have, recognizing that they need to act and be heard in order for us to determine as a country what direction which we should go. But again, kudos to you for the work that you did and the leadership that you showed. I know Mr. Bizilow and I were particularly proud at the end of that event, just to see. And I will say that Mr. Bizilow indicated from the get-go, he had zero concerns that students would do the right thing and really conduct themselves appropriately and respectfully. I know we have a lot of faith in the student body here, and I think, you know, we've seen some stories from around the country, that school districts may have had to live differently, and every school district has to make its own choices. But I think if you don't already have a culture where student voices are valued, it's hard to pivot on a dime and all of a sudden have a big event that's, features student leadership and student voice. I think it happened very naturally here, because that's the culture that's been built over a long period of time. And that's a tribute again to student leaders now and past, as well as Mr. Bizilow and his team in terms of empowering students with that kind of responsibility. So again, very impressive, and really appreciate the leadership that you exhibited.
Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we will move along. Next, we are going to deal with Policy 935, Staff and School Committee Travel. This was presented to us by Mr. Palish and Ms. Gonzano at our last meeting. We have posted it for comment. Has anyone received any comments or input?
I don't see them. They just won't be back here.
And in general, I would say that the provisions of this policy pretty much mimic standard employee language that is used in a variety of centers. So we need to discuss that today. Are there any further discussions or comments regarding this policy? And we need to put it to a vote. Can I have a motion to accept our school policy 935 as presented?
So, move.
Set.
Any further discussion or vote? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we are going to have a first reading of an update on our harassment policy. Again, Mr. Palish, Ms. Gonzano.
Sure. I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone in a second to watch through the policy in a little bit more detail. But Mrs. Gonzano and I, as the policy subcommittee, have had a chance to not only review the draft you have before you tonight, but also to discuss it with Ms. Malone and Dr. Sawyer. The draft you have before you reflects the feedback that we've provided so far. I want to commend Ms. Malone for her exceptional work on this draft, which she has also discussed with the district's legal counsel, and which, in my opinion, reflects a thoughtful and responsible policy that will support anyone who should feel that they need to come forward to report or concern of some kind, as rare as we hope that that might be, especially in light of the national conversation that's been taking place around the Me Too movement. It is important that Shrewsbury Public Schools staff feel safe and supported in addressing any type of harassment concern that they might experience. And I think that the policy draft we have before us tonight puts into place a really solid framework for that to happen. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone to sort of walk us through some of the specifics.
Thank you, Mr. Palish. So this draft has some key changes to it. For one, the older policy only addressed sexual harassment, and this new policy addresses all forms of harassment, whether that's based on gender identity, ethnicity, religion, and all the various protected classes. So it really addresses all the forms in which someone could potentially feel uncomfortable and be experiencing harassment. It also references social media. Since the last draft of this policy, social media has become quite a bit more important, and it points people towards our social media policy as well as referencing it. It also strengthens the language on retaliation. It details what could happen if a complaint is found to be true. It allows for verbal or written complaints. In the past, it was only written complaints. It encourages staff to report concerns to any of many different administrators, so there is no longer only one point of contact, but that you have a choice of going to a number of different people, and you can choose the one you feel most comfortable with. And it also encourages staff to report concerns, even if they're not sure if what they have witnessed or experienced constitutes harassment. We want to know about situations where someone is just wondering, because those are the situations that sometimes people keep silent on for many years, and it could have been an early warning signal to something that got much worse over time. So those are the key changes to it, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Palish and Mrs. Gonzano.
Questions or comments regarding this? So this will be posted. Now, I'm, you may have mentioned this, I'm rifling through it right now, don't see it. Are we dealing at all with any sort of online harassment? Is that included in this policy at all?
Yes, we refer use of social media, text, email, all of that.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. I have no further questions.
It'll be posted for comment, and we will also check in with our employee groups as well in the interim period, and we'll ask you to, if there are any adjustments that need to be made based on feedback, we'll bring those to the next, to the policy subcommittee and or this group at your next meeting. And, but I do believe it's a very well-formulated policy. Ms. Malone used a lot of professional exemplars of what's considered best practice in this area to construct it, and again, it was reviewed by our legal counsel, and we're confident it's very thorough. If there are any minor adjustments, we'll bring those to you, and we'll ask you to approve this at your next meeting.
Okay. All right. So it'll be posted, and we encourage anyone who reviews it and has comments to contact the school committee. Thank you. All right. We will move on to a presentation regarding extended school care program. To give us some details about the programs we have and the costs surrounding them, we have Karen Isaacson here to give us some details. Welcome.
I think she's gonna use the projector, so some of us may want to just switch over.
Primarily tonight, I want to talk about the financial situation of extended day and recommendations for the fee. for the fee increases. I will start by saying that, you know, demand really continues to grow. We've worked hard to add additional spots where we can, and we increased enrollment by 40 FTE across the district this year. Even with that, I have 180 people currently on my waiting list, just for the current school year, with hundreds more on deck coming in for the next school year. So though enrollment increases bring in more revenue, it also brings in more expense, so it's not necessarily changing the financial picture, but we are striving to meet community need for quality childcare. So for many consecutive years, the extended day revenue was exceeding our expenses. We built a comfortable reserve, and we held our fees steady for the last, you know, five years in light of that situation. Last year, fiscal year '17, we recognized that that reserve was being depleted, and so the school committee voted for a 3% increase, which even at the time, we knew probably was not enough to cover our expenses, but we really wanted to minimize the impact to families. So let me go to, is that one right? Yep. 100% of our funding comes from parent tuition, and as we said recently, this revenue has not covered our expenses. Federal guidelines recommend holding three months of revenue in reserve, which for extended day would be $400,000. Our fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year was about $187,000, projected by the end of the year, $110,000. So we're looking at a $76,000 loss for this fiscal year. Clearly, something dramatically has to change, because we do not want our reserve to be depleted any further. Contributing factors to this. No, I guess I was doing the projection first, forgive me. This is just a broad overview of where, what our revenue was coming in, about $1.5 million in tuition, and then there's a reduced fee for income-eligible families, a sibling discount for families with more than one child, net $1,480,000. 85% of that is our benefits and our wages, and then you can see sort of the other categories. We pay about $50,000 a year to offset electricity use after school, a small proportion for supplies, administrative expenses, professional development. So if nothing changed next year, did not increase fees at all, we did not give any cost-of-living raises to staff, we only gave the required step increases. Extended day staff are on a five-step salary, so people who are at a step one this year would get step two next year. Factoring that in is about a $27,000 increase to our wages, but if nothing else changed, we would lose almost $125,000 next year. So this is why I'm coming to you today, to talk about some possibilities for how to turn that around. So some of the contributing factors, and, I mean, obviously, cost of food and supplies go up, that's part of life. There are a greater number of families qualifying for financial aid than we've had in the past, and a rising number of students who need support to be successful in the program. We delightfully have very low staff turnover, which I'm happy about, but that puts a lot more of our staff at step five, which are the higher wages. They don't look at it any other way. I don't want to lose our great staff, but it's a factor. We've had really infrequent rate increases over the last 10-year period, and the expansion of, from just the extended day program to extended learning as a year-round program, required full-time year-round administrator in my position, as well as a full-time year-round administrative assistant to manage all the different parts of the job. But I think one of the big factors that we've overlooked in the past is that the early release days that were added to the school calendar back in fiscal year '13 add a significant proportion of additional wages for staff, who are now not working a three-hour shift, but working a six-hour shift. We are providing students with lunch, so that we can manage food allergies and not have students bringing food from home that might not be safe in the environment for everyone. And then in order to create a professional environment and space for professional development in the schools, extended day often has to leave the facility, and so we go on field trips, which mean transportation costs, admission costs, things like that. And there are other days outside of early release days where, like the upcoming literacy event at Floral is a big family event, there is, their setup time required to get that event going means extended day means to leave the building. Just things like that happen throughout the year, and we share space, and when there's wonderful events happening, we leave. But that means we're taking a bus to the bowling alley and working on fees that are associated with that. So tonight, some of the proposed changes would be a 3% tuition increase, removing our sibling discount, and adding a $25 per child per day fee for early release days. If we put all of those factors into play, you'll see a small, small profit of $1,000. Obviously, I know that we will need to continue to look at ways to control costs, because that's not a realistic buffer for us, but without fee increases, we're not even going to come close to breaking even. And this also incorporates just a 1% cost of living increase for employees on, you know, on top of whatever step raise they are earning. There's a graphic look at our expenses, and you see that largest blue section of wages, 75%, followed up by benefits is another 12%. You know, most of our revenue is turning right back around to staff. One of the smallest pieces of the pie is our expense piece of the pie, and I calculated this out as, what does our snack cost on an annual basis? What do our supplies cost? And that's everything from our Legos to our art supplies to our glue. Per pupil is really, really low. There's, you know, 69 cents per child per day for snack, 39 cents per child per day for supplies. There's no room to cut there. That's, I think we offer some great activities, but cutting from there isn't going to make a big difference in that picture. The impact of early release days is significant. I went for the last school year, day by day, what did it cost us for wages? And not, not the six-hour wages, but the wages on top of what they normally would have worked, and in excess of what they normally would have worked. Transportation, admission fees, lunch, et cetera. $83,000 that we would not have spent if we were not having early release days. That's a big piece of, you know, if we're looking at $125,000 loss, and $83,000 of that goes toward early release days, that's a significant piece of our budget. So if we were to charge a fee for families, it would, I would only consider charging it for the five days that are professional development days where school closes. I would not consider charging it for other types of field trips, or the last day of school, where we have a half-day and frequently take trips. Really focusing on the days where faculty are staying for professional development, extended days most often leaving. And when I factored in all the different field trips in fiscal year '17, not just the early release, it was $92,000. If we charged a $25 fee, it would have offset that by 57.7, so the fee would not even offset all of our expense, but we're looking to just mitigate that with some additional funding. So to give you a perspective on our rate history, in 2007, we went five years and increased tuition by 15% in one blow. We waited another five years, increased it 3%. This fiscal year, we're looking at another 3%. I realize that's two increases back-to-back. In the scope of the last 10 years, we haven't seen a lot of increase, and, you know, really, this next slide will show you, we are significantly under market rates. We charge, you know, highlighted in yellow is our current extended day rates compared to some local private practice places that are, you know, are kind of directly competitors, but if families can't get into extended day, they might use the wire, they might use Little Beginnings. But then I also did a survey of the other public schools in Massachusetts who offer care like we do. There's not a lot in our immediate community, but in the greater community, you know, places like Ashland, Watertown. I mean, they're not our neighbors, but they are offering the same kind of program we offer, and we are coming very close to the bottom of the pile there. What I find particularly interesting is, they're about in the middle where it says state reimbursement rate. State of Massachusetts offers childcare vouchers for income-eligible families, and if you have a contract with the state, they will reimburse you a certain amount per day for families who are receiving subsidized care. Typically, I've been a childcare director in other settings, that reimbursement rate is usually much, much lower than what you're charging your general public, and if you accept vouchers, you're accepting a loss. The state reimbursement rate at $365 a month is significantly, almost $100 higher than what Shrewsbury is charging its families. So, you know, we are providing a tremendous value to our families, and are really working to keep those costs low. So even with the fee increases that we're proposing tonight, if you go back to our previous slide, we're saying it would go up to 276 per month from 268, that's the 3% increase. That still keeps us very close to the bottom, and that's assuming this is everyone else's current school year fees. They may also raise their rates next year. So even with a fee increase, we have very reasonable rates. We took a closer look at the sibling discount. This school year, we have 696 students for 546 families. 27% of families are receiving a sibling discount. We offer a 5% discount for people who have two children, and a 10% discount for families with three or more children, of which currently there are only four families with three or more children. 143 families with two children. That expense of offering that discount is about a $34,000 loss this year, or, loss is not the word I mean, but reduction in revenue. And I think across the district that, Pat could probably speak more to this, but that family discounts are not something that are traditionally offered in other places across the district. It is common in childcare, but it is not common within Shrewsbury Public Schools to say, like, we have a bus fee, but you don't get a discount on your second bus fee, or we have an athletics fee, there's not a sibling discount on the athletics fee. Am I?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, thank you. Make sure I'm representing that correctly. So potential impact to families if these recommendations are approved. Families with one student enrolled five days, both before and after school. This factors in the 3% increase, reduction of the discount, and where it says $125 is $25 per early release day. It adds up to an annual increase of $245, or, you know, 25 bucks a month, which is about a 6.5% increase. And then families who have two students, also enrolled five days before and after school, really would be seeing an 11.5% increase, which is large, I recognize that, and that affects about 27% of our current enrollment. So just to give you a little perspective on our staffing. This draft for a 1 to 10 ratio, Greg, I just messed something up. There we go. We worked at one, one staff member approximately for every 12 students, a little bit smaller, more like a 1 to 7 at Beal where the children are so young. So this is just a breakdown of how many staff per day from an FTE perspective, how many students per FTE, administrators being me and my admin assistant. We have 10 aides working one-to-one to support students at our largest sites like Sherwood and Floral. The site coordinator there is not counted in that 1 to 10 ratio, because they are managing 120 students and their families and all of the moving parts that go with that, so they're sort of pulled out of that mix. But that's the overall, where the lion's share of our revenue is going, right back to staff. Questions?
Should we move up there? Or is that?
Let's move back here, and then we can go with the questions, okay?
Thank you for that presentation. Well, that was concise and answered a lot of the questions that we had. I would say that we solicited input from the community, and we got more emails on this than we get on most things, because there was a lot of interest. And also, I would say that when you propose an increase in cost and you ask for input, generally, if it were me, and I thought it was okay, I wouldn't give you any input. So I was surprised when the majority of responses regarding increasing the fees and the other components of this, we got a majority who were in favor of it. The only, what place where there was a majority that was not in favor of it had to do with the sibling discount. And even there, it was not, you know, a huge majority, so I was, as I say, I was kind of surprised by that response. But before I go on, colleagues, comments or questions? Jason.
Sandy.
Really more comment. Thank you for addressing where, what the fees cover, because that was one of the questions that we did receive. And I think that really shows anybody who is interested in the costs, it really, we're not spending a lot in different areas, but again, it's people-driven, so we do have a lot of overhead with salaries. As a former consumer of the Extended School Care Program, with two working parents, it, you know, was a lifesaver for us as a family. But it's not required, it's not required for the district to have extended school care. We're very lucky we have such a wonderful program, and I think that's the hardest thing. We want working parents to have the ability to, you know, make sure that their kids are safe after school. We provide a very low cost when you look at other districts and other communities. So I think that's the difficulty, that we can't, it's not recovered, or it's not required, so our fees really do need to cover the cost of the program. And again, it's a great program, it's a lifesaver, especially the half-days, because some employers don't allow people to take half-days. They make you take a whole day for vacation. So I think it's another thing that we have to be grateful for, but again, the fee has to cover the cost of that, and your presentation shows exactly where everything goes. So thank you.
Jason.
Thank you for your presentation, and recognizing, of course, that we are an affordable option for many working parents who might find the prospect of a fee to be alarming. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about financial aid. I noticed you did have a piece in the materials provided in the book.
Yeah.
Which went through the process of financial aid. I know that this is sliding scale, so I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit.
Absolutely. And we base that sliding scale on, again, on the state's voucher system, where in order to qualify for state support, you need to be earning 50% of the state median income or less. And so I kind of borrowed that as the model. Parents apply to me with some documentation, and then based on their total family size and their average monthly income, they can get a 50% discount, all the way to a 90% discount off of our fees. And we are currently have 27 families who are receiving financial aid, which is about 5% of our population. We had, in the past, accepted state vouchers, and then learned that we were inadvertently not following policy, and that we offered a sliding scale as well as accepting vouchers, and you cannot do both. We made the decision to drop the voucher contract, because we would be able to serve more families this way. There is a significant waitlist for vouchers. I've been, I called them to try to get an answer on how long that was. I know in my past childcare history, it can be years of parents being on a waitlist before they can get a voucher. There are families in our program who still have them and use them at summer camps and things, and I, they're basically getting charged at the same rate as they would have with their childcare voucher, because we're using the same sliding scale. The difference is we're not getting reimbursed for any portion of that. We made that as a choice to say we would conserve more of our community by offering our own sliding scale, but it certainly does impact our finances.
Just a quick follow-up, in terms of the process, if there were a parent who were both eligible and interested, should they contact you directly?
Yeah.
Should they go to the website? What would be the process for them?
Contact me directly. You know, information is included in registration procedures of, you know, please contact the director. Financial aid is available, contact the director, the sliding scale. There's an application they fill out telling which documents they need to provide, and it goes directly to me. It is a, you know, private, and information's not shared otherwise, but then I share them the scale, this is where you sit in the scale, you would qualify for this.
Thank you.
John.
Great report. Very comprehensive. As I'm looking at the slide with no change, clearly, the loss is, jumps off the page, $23,000 if we did nothing. And you mentioned the reserve before, where we're at now, which is $110,000.
Right, right.
With the changes that are made, you referenced the $1,000 profit. With the changes that are made, you referenced the $1,000 profit, but do we, what's the status of that reserve if we make all those changes?
If, you know, if we held, if we had a break-even budget, the reserve does not go up. The reserve would hold at 110.
Okay.
You know, it is my intention to be looking very closely at expense, making sure that, you know, are we staffed appropriately for next year's enrollment? Are there any ways that we can, you know, cut some costs here and there? But that's not going to turn us around without, I mean, it would require about a 10% reduction in our staff to make that up. And I think we would significantly compromise the quality of the program to lose 10% of the staff.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Mrs. Isakson, one question. Oh, sorry, didn't see you.
Yeah. It was around the waitlist. And a lot of the times when we talk about, we have our conversation about increasing fees, we have this saturation point, like how much parents would pay. But you referenced a waitlist, it sounded pretty healthy. I was wondering if you could talk about that.
Mm-hmm. There is, demand just exceeds capacity in our buildings and because we're really limited to spaces like the cafeteria, there's only so many bodies you can put in there and still run a quality program. So I maintain a wait, a waitlist, you know, based on your date of application and that list of these 180 families who are not at this point getting in this year, they carry over to next year in that same order. And anybody new entering school gets put on after them. It would, you know, it can be really challenging. At some of our schools, it's more challenging than others. The Floral waitlist is really long and, you know, I've already pushed them to 120 students, which is the most they've ever served and it's tough, but they're, you know, they've kind of restructured the way they do leadership over there and they've split the groups a little bit to make that work. But they are really, I cannot take more students at Floral and that is my longest waitlist right now with over 70 kids on that, just on the Floral waitlist. Yeah. Thank you.
So a couple of questions. One is I noticed the student-teacher ratio is a little lower for this than it is for traditional classes. Can you give me a little idea as to how that?
Sure. If you, picture anywhere from 70 to 100 students in a cafeteria in free choice activities. So rather than saying there are 25 students in a classroom that's a very structured set curriculum, we are offering, there's, you know, three or four art projects over here and there's the Lego table over here and some kids are outside and some kids are in the gym, really requiring staff to be stationed in different places as well as understanding who's getting signed out. Parents are picking up at all different times. Somebody's manning the door, making sure the right child's going home with the right parent, making sure children coming back and forth from the bathroom, you know, every child is accounted for. There's a lot of moving parts and it's different every day. Again, I'm part of a directors group called the New England, no, the Network of Extended Day Directors in Massachusetts. And they are all running at a very similar 1 to 10 ratio. The state law, if you were, we're license exempt because we're school-run, but childcare licensing says no more than 13 students per adult at this age and most of my colleagues say best practice is more around 1 to 10. Also by staffing at 1 to 10, it means that if someone is out sick and I cannot find a sub, we can self-cover without putting our program in jeopardy for a day. Whereas I think when you're pushing that 1 to 13 ratio and someone's out, it becomes a far less safe environment. So 1 to 10 is the ballpark that really helps keep all of those different components. We can offer a rich variety of activities and also keep safety as a priority.
Another question, are the employees salaried? Are they per hour? If there's a snow day, do they get paid?
No, they are hourly. They do not get paid if there's a snow day. They, you know, only get paid when they come to work. And, you know, most of them have a set schedule. It's two and a half to three hours a day. Some people come in a little bit early to do some planning, you know, maybe a half an hour ahead of dismissal time to do setup and prep work. But a lot of our staff are paraprofessionals during the school day, so they're really walking in at the same time as the students and going home anytime between 5:00 and 6:00. As the, as students leave, staff are also staggered out leaving.
Would there be any thought if there's snow days or anything to providing any kind of credit or anything along those lines?
Because snow days are made up at the end of the school year, you know, our tuition is based on the 180-day school calendar. So we look at this as it's an annual fee, based on 180 days, we divide it into 10 equal payments for convenience so that it's not a different, you know, different rate every month, which would be hard to manage on a billing perspective.
So a concern of a parent that snow days are not considered here, in actuality, they are considered. There's a flat number of days that that student is going to take one way or another.
Correct. And we really try to write that in a lot of places. It's on our tuition sheet, it's in our handbook, it's kind of in our acknowledgement page of, you know, some months have more school days than others. Our fee is flat because it is an annual fee divided by 10. So it, we're not giving credits for vacation week because that's not built into the fee.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer. Mr. Collins, first, Allen.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGee and Dr. Sawyer. I just wanted to make mention a couple of things. One is with regard to the question around the waitlist and space and capacity that Mrs. Isaacson has been part of our Beal project planning team. And so, you know, that was one of the tangential pieces, but yet still a very important piece so that, you know, looking forward to opening a new Beal school hopefully in several years, that certainly, you know, taking off the existing Beal school, replacing with a much larger school would expand capacity and help with that waitlist issue. And that Mrs. Isaacson has been part of that planning process. With respect to some of the financial pieces, as she mentioned, that this year she's recommending and with my endorsement as well, some more substantive changes to right the ship, if you will, financially. And that, you know, I would fully expect that next year as well, in years succeeding, that there would be recommendations for annual percentage increases to keep up with costs and so as to avoid this years of no increase and then a big jump, but rather kind of even steady pattern of annual increases. So I just wanted to make mention of that as well.
Okay. Before I give it to you, I just want to make one other comment, just from a point of view of my perspective on this. This is an excellent but optional service and we do not have the ability to cost shift from any other place in the budget to support it. So really what we're talking about is bringing you up to break even in order to continue to offer this service to the public.
Just thank you for the report. I thought it was extremely well done and clear. I have been for a number of years and continue to be a parent who takes advantage of the service and it is a substantial value to Shrewsbury families. And not only in the sense of financially, as you saw, it's very low cost compared to virtually all of its peers. At the same time, the quality of what students experience is at a very high level. And I've seen that firsthand over the years that my children have been at the elementary level and now my youngest is at Sherwood level, which is the, it's through Sherwood Middle School after Sherwood, we don't have it any longer. But there are, actually anecdotally, my daughter was talking to an acquaintance in another community who's in an extended day program and she actually used the adjective that, she had made some, where'd you make that? I made that in my extended day program. They said, oh, we don't do anything like that. She said, well, we, we have a very exotic extended day program. I'm not sure if it's important to use, but in terms of the, but generally meant that they do a lot of fun stuff. They're very engaged, they have the opportunity to finish homework, but they're doing things that are really, and lots of choice. These are long days for some of these kids and for them to be, you know, try to really work with that energy flow that the kids have as they are tired from a day of school. But also we had seen getting exercise and being able to do things that are meaningful to them, whether that's arts or crafts or games or whatever it might be. It is an extraordinarily well-run program and that starts at the top, Mrs. Isaacson has outstanding jobs, she's come on board, and the staff is, it really does an excellent job with the students. So as I'll be speaking about in the larger conversation about fees and tuitions, I wholeheartedly support the recommendation and I believe, as the committee has stated, that it's important that we are able to run the program effectively, but do so at at least a break-even point. But again, appreciate the report and the work very much.
Thanks for coming today and getting to sell some information. We will now move on to the full picture of the tuition rates for this year 2019. And to a vote, we discussed at the last meeting, the proposal, we've obtained comments from the public. Virtually all of the comments that I received had to do with extended day. I don't know that there were any others. But what is proposed is increasing the bus fee from $275 to $300 per student, the athletic fee to $310 per student from $300. The activity fee, it is proposed with Dr. Sawyer's recommendation, to have no change in the middle, the Sherwood Middle School fee, which is going to remain at $50, to have a Shrewsbury High School activity fee remaining at $100. But Oak Middle increasing to $75 to increase the offerings at that facility. And the preschool tuition, what we have is a recommended 3% increase in the tuition rate for preschool and full-day kindergarten. We are looking to phase in free full-day kindergarten and so the proposal is to decrease tuition by 10% from $4,000 per year to $3,600. And then the extended school day, as you heard, there's a 3% increase in tuition rate, a $25 fee per early release day and an elimination of the multi-child discount. Before, are there any comments or questions, concerns regarding this?
Should we open the discussion, you're looking for questions first?
Yeah. Let's open the discussion.
Sure. I'll start. I don't like fees. If it were a viable option, I would prefer, we have not recognized, and I know that we all recognize, both on the school committee and on our staff, that we are a relatively significantly fee district, if not one of the most over fee districts in the state. I think if we had a viable option to continue programming and services at the level that we do without the need for a single fee, I have no doubt that we would elect to do so. But this is the reality of the financial situation that we have at the time of Shrewsbury. This is the reality of the level of investment made in our K through 12 education system where in order to support programming, especially some programming that is above and beyond legal requirements, we have to have additional sources of revenue to meet those financial needs. And it is for those reasons that I support the proposal in front of us. When we hear from parents and community members from time to time dismay at the idea of having to pay additional funds to support something that's part of a public school, in my heart I agree. And I don't, I don't condemn or really fail to see their point, it's just simply a financial reality. I would like to emphasize for those families that any family who experiences hardship or inability to pay whether or not there's a full sliding scale, and I know our staff and central office are very accommodating and helpful and willing to do what is necessary to help parents and families meet financial needs, but this is the reality of the situation we're in. These revenues are needed to support these programmings. And with regard to the one reduction in fee, and I actually think this might be the first time I ever voted for a reduction in the fee with regard to full-day kindergarten, I support that as well because we need to move ourselves towards free full-day day. We're reaching a point where it's almost inappropriate for a K through 12 district in Massachusetts to not offer that. I think most folks who don't have children currently at that age level in the school system simply assume we do. And I'm glad to see us moving in that direction. I'm glad that this is at least one fee reduction in this package that we're going to vote for. But I do support the proposal in front of us and I thank everyone in the community who's reached out to express their point of view, but this is the reality of our situation.
Erin.
To follow up on what Jason was talking about, a lot of anecdotal evidence when you have conversations with parents, it comes down to teachers in the classroom. And many times I have heard people saying, I'll pay the additional fee so that I have the smaller class size, which seems to be the trend and the theme we've always experienced here on the school committee is the focus on class size. So this is not an agreeable way of achieving that goal. And certainly I'm uncomfortable with raising fees. I don't like it myself. I do support the idea of reducing the fee for a full-day day so we're not paying a huge amount in, hopefully in 2022 when the new Beal opens. I think we just saw it demonstrated from the ESE program that there was a 15% increase one year. And so that I think it's smart to kind of make it even over the next period of years. So this has my support as well, as reluctant as I am to support fee increases.
Sandy.
You know, we unfortunately are dependent on these fees and we have been for many years now, but it's a necessary component of the budget, as Erin said, so we don't have to reduce in other areas such as teaching, staff, which would have that ripple effect to our students' education. I also, you know, the costs, you know, absent the extended school care, which is really a self-funded, the fees don't cover the full costs of busing and athletics. So, you know, fees help us, but it's still not covering the full costs, it's from the appropriate budget. Smaller increments I think are easier while nobody wants to pay more. Smaller increments I hope are easier for families to absorb as opposed to a 15% or, you know, a significant increase because we have sometimes, you know, let fees go for many years and then we do have a big jump. And that can be very difficult for families to handle all at once. So I also support the, what's laid out for the fee structure. I also support the, starting the reduction in the full-day K fee as we head toward hopefully the new Beal. And I think, you know, again, we're so dependent, but it's really not an equitable situation to be charging that amount of money for what should be a free public education. So I support the, what you've laid out.
John. Just to add, I do support the proposal described in the booklet here. Three things stick out to me, the 17% increase in the bus contract that we're about to receive, which requires an increase. We don't have the ability to absorb that entirely. Secondly, I think we just heard in terms of the extended school care, if we kept things as is, we would operate at a loss.
Right.
So, you know, we've got to keep that quality of program going and we need to, you know, look to increase. And I think, you know, compared to the other districts that offer comparable services, we are really good value. And then to the point that's already been made, but truly, full-day kindergarten, to reduce the fees at this point is the responsible thing to do, in my opinion. Five years from now, we'll be in a better place because of that. So I do support it.
It's true. I think we're looking towards a time when full-day kindergarten is considered the standard and 95% of the district's offering full-day kindergarten. I think we have to move towards that direction. The overwhelming majority have it as a free service for their populace. Operating, we are here because we're advocates of free public education, but the truth is is that that involves a core of services. It doesn't involve absolutely everything that we offer. And we do have the ability to offer other services that we feel enhance the experience for these students, but unfortunately we have to charge for them. And even with the charges, not all of these fees are completely covering the service that is provided. Buses being a great example of that where the net cost to the district is still millions of dollars despite the high fees that we are charging for students who are using the buses. So I agree with how the proposal be forced right now. Dr. Sawyer, would you like to make some comments?
I think you covered them all and I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I would also emphasize that my preference would be, other than pure self-funding programs like the extended school care program, I would prefer to pay for all these out of the school budget. But this is a reality that we face. We have a substantial gap that we need to close and we need to be able to keep up with rising costs in a variety of ways. We've tried to, based on the presentation that was made to you at your last meeting, some of these are not the highest level that were of the range that were presented. I think we're trying to be thoughtful in terms of our recommendation relative to what's the, what's the cost, expected cost increase and how can we moderate the impact on families to the extent we can. But I agree with the philosophy of trying to do a little bit at a time, over time as opposed to big jumps now and then. But the memorandum represents my recommendation and I ask for your support.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the changes in fees and tuition as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll next have a fiscal year 2018 update.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Yes, this is another update on the current year budget. You have a report in You have a report in your packet that provides some narrative and some financial information, which I'll highlight for you. Again, this current year budget is just over $62.3 million, and it was a 3.2% increase over the prior year fiscal '17. To date, and this is as of late March, March 20, excuse me, late February, February 25th, the district had expended just over $33.8 million, or 54% of its budget. We have encumbered salaries in other services, goods and services, in the tune of $26.3 million, or another 42%, and a remaining balance of 3.6% not yet committed. You can see my year-end projection on the financial piece, and that is that, given the past experience already that we have realized, and the encumbrances that are shown, and what I am projecting to be year-end expenses, I am projecting that the district will spend just over $62 million of the budget, or 99.4% in leaving a projected surplus of just about $367,000, or 0.59%. There are some variances in these various '19 categories, some of which I'll just highlight for you. We have some small variances, relatively small variances on a percentage basis with various salary categories, both administrative and unit aid teachers, 0.1%, 0.4%. We're going to, projecting that we're going to be over in the secretarial technology and other category by about $14,000. We did have to hire mid-year some additional human resources support to manage all of the compliance and reporting requirements from the state. At this point in the year, with respect to substitute teachers, day-to-day substitute and long-term substitutes, I've become more positive around the projection, meaning we're looking at a surplus net category of about $60,000. I think that this is some realization of changing the rate for the long-term substitutes to $200 a day, and that we're realizing a full year of that, and that was a positive move, move that was recommended by Mrs. Malone and adopted by the school committee. The employee benefits category, an overage there of about $53,000 projected is really having more retirees this year than projected and payout of some sick leave benefits per their contract. Some positive variance on special education transportation, but negative experience with respect to some regular education transportation. And that's primarily due to having more, to transport more homeless foster care children than we had budgeted for. That's always very hard to predict on an annual basis. Some positive variance in educational contractual services, that's primarily a result of projecting to spend less for some special education providers than we had, than budgeted. And then on the kind of lower categories is what I'd call more of the discretionary, more manageable supplies, textbooks, educational supplies, and equipment. I'm projecting we're going to be very close to budget in all those categories. The positive variance in utilities, telephone, we're spending less there than budgeted to the tune of about $16,000. So those are some of the highlights. This also, projection assumes that we will use significantly less circuit breaker revenue as a result of reduced enrollment and placement costs for special education out-of-district students, which is positive news on a cost basis. That certainly will catch up, if you will, because the circuit breaker program is a reimbursement program. So you're only reimbursed for certain types of expenditures. So if we're spending less this year, then we'll be reimbursed less next year. That's how that program works. So that, those are some of the highlights. And I guess my final note would be that, you know, this projected surplus, I'm certain that will play into what will be, in a couple of weeks, a recommendation by the superintendent for fiscal '19, subsequent fiscal year reduction plan, so that we can carry forward this projected surplus into next year vis-à-vis the circuit breaker fund. So just wanted to foreshadow that as well. But that is the report, and I'm happy, answering the questions that the committee might have.
Thanks a lot, colleagues. Questions, concerns, comments? We've, we've heard a lot about getting less in circuit breaker funding than we had previously projected. You are projecting less in costs going forward for the special education program. How does this figure into our finances for this year and for next year?
So it will allow us to carry forward additional funding, or carry forward circuit breaker funding from this year into next year, and it can help next year's budget. We've taken advantage of some of that assumed savings already through the projected tuition for fiscal '19. But this projected surplus here of $366,000 would be another means by which we could carry through the circuit breaker funding. You know, it is somewhat, it's kind of hard to just talk about verbally because there are a variety of moving parts with respect to our costs and what the reimbursement rate will be projected by the state. And the state has talked about maybe providing some additional funding this year, and so it is constantly a moving target. And that is why this area has such high volatility and is a difficult place to budget on an annual basis. And so, you know, the latest news that we heard, and again, this was a verbal piece from the Department of Education, meaning from special education staff attended, is that, you know, this current year, on a percentage basis, the state indicated that they would reimburse so-called 65% of, for costs that were net eligible costs. And just recently, they said that they're going to increase that to 68.5%. In addition to that, there's an initiative at the state level to bring that even further up to 75%. So, you know, we're not exactly sure how much money we're going to get this year until that last payment's made in June. So that's, that's what feeds into the volatility. So hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Okay. Under new business, we have received a letter from Maurice Apollo regarding, he is chairman of the Beal Building Reuse Committee, and he has sent us an inquiry as to whether we have, as a department and committee, interest in retaining possession and use of the Beal School at One Maple Avenue. In consultation with Dr. Sawyer, we have constructed a response, the gist of which is that we are planning on getting a replacement school for Beal and moving educational services out of there. The capacity of the new school is designed to assume all the students who are currently at Beal and allow for some expansion as well. And if all goes as planned, we do not have any educational or administrative use planned. But at this point in time, we cannot guarantee that since no shovels have been put in the ground yet. Are there any other ideas for a response, or concerns, questions?
Would be in favor of the committee writing a letter to the Beal Reuse Committee along the lines of the superintendent's recommendation indicating that we do not intend for another use, but obviously would be, given that it's about five years down the road, it would be best for a later school committee to make that choice.
Any further comments?
No. Again, from my perspective, the message we sent loud and clear to the master school building authority was that we see this building is coming to the end of its useful life in the relatively near future, and that's why we need a new building in terms of the, it would not make sense to me to turn around and then say, "Let's use it for educational purposes" after we decide it's not going to be suitable for much longer. So in terms of, I give credit to the Board of Selectmen and to be moving forward with already established committee lists soon to be thinking about how that piece of property in the center of town might be used. And again, I, whether I'm, would not want to make a recommendation that a future school committee would have to try to live with, but in terms of what my intent would be at this point in time would be that the school department would no longer have a use for that building once we move out and no longer need it for classroom space for our program.
Okay.
I would move that. The committee direct the chairperson to write a letter to the Beal Reuse Committee along the lines of the superintendent's recommended at course of action.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I am going to transplant myself to the podium for a brief presentation. So what I wanted to talk to you about today is just to bring up the issue that we have concerns, I have concerns, many of them have concerns regarding maintaining services within this department. We look at our budgets year to year, and basically what we see is that we have to make cuts. And we always balance the budget, but that budget comes at a cost. And so finding ways to communicate with the public and with the town government that would enhance our ability to transmit the idea that maintenance of services should be a priority, I think, is what we need to do. Funding may change going forward. We have enjoyed growth to this community, which has increased the annual amounts of property taxes that have been collected. But going forward, funding may not continue to increase at that same rate, and we may need to involve the public with budget decision-making more than they have been involved in the past. We've emphasized how low our costs are. We've shown high performance on standardized measures, but we need to communicate value elsewhere in the system. I think those of us who are on the school committee understand that there's a lot more education than an SAT score or a college placement, and that we need to be able to allow people to understand just what this is and try to make level services a priority. So in thinking about how to communicate things and evolve what we are doing, there are a couple of big thoughts that I wanted to allow us to discuss. One is just the idea of putting forward trends. We, we need to predict the future, and I think that it is easier for people to understand what is coming if they can see the line, if they can see what changes over time. And so presenting people with trends, I think, is helpful. Graphics also. Communicate information at a glance, and sometimes tables can be intimidating. The big picture is the priority here, and I think we have been so responsive to those who want fine detail about budgets and the like, and we present fine detail to everyone. And what happens is, is we meet the needs of a few and I think overwhelm the majority with information that they don't always need to absorb. So we can take advantage of electronic media. We can try to present our information in electronic formats that allow people to get information at the depth that they need. You need to present a consistent picture. Thus, the dashboard idea, when you get in your car, you know what corner to look in, you know what areas are most interesting to you. It has a familiar look to it. And so that's the, the notion here, that in all of our communications, whether we're dealing with town reports or town meeting budgets or the like, that we can try to have a consistent picture. And using benchmarks is helpful. But I think that we also have to temper with the fact that I have had the opportunity to go back and look at town reports back 100 years or more, and we've been doing the benchmarks right along. And we've had similar issues regarding providing level services right along as well. So I think we always have to say, "That doesn't tell the whole story." We have to follow that with a story. We have to do more than just data. We have to look at ways of telling a story about a student's experience or a parent's experience that will allow people to understand what we're talking about. And I've got just a suggested, suggested menu of things for us to present. And cost is always there. We, we look at per pupil expenses. Those are easily available. They're standardized. And our operating budget, the town appropriated budget, the amount that we get in state aid, I think those things need to be put in context so that people understand that the town appropriated budget that we discuss in such detail at the town meeting every year is not the whole enchilada, and that even when we discuss the town appropriated budget, a third of that is coming in state aid that is intended to go for the schools anyway. We need to keep people aware of the fees that we're charging because people who aren't sending kids to the schools right now don't realize how much of this free public education costs the average parent right now. And so being able to make them aware of these fees is something to do. We always emphasize our MCAS scores, our, our college placements and the like, that is, those are outcomes that we can be proud of. But in between, I, I think we could stand to emphasize the services that are provided, including class size, including the AP offerings that we have, the vocational offerings, the various things that we cut over the years that don't come back, and we tend to forget about, issues such as stress management, which in some cases can be related to class size, and our out-of-district numbers, which are things that we tend to focus on as well. In addition to that, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made available some information on what happens to our graduates, especially those who, that go on to college, what happens to our graduates when they enter public schools. And I think that having the public aware of that also is an important thing. So I'm going to show you just a couple of graphics to give you an idea. This isn't, this isn't the product. It's just to sort of take these words and turn them into pictures. These here are much too much to put on one page, but I put them on one page anyway. These are trends over time of our MCAS scores, comparing them with comparable districts so we can get a sense as to where we stand regarding the state and with regarding comparable districts. This graphic at the bottom here is one that I would like to watch like a hawk, even though the state has not updated it in a while. I think it's important for us to focus on. This is the number of students who graduate from our schools, who go on to public schools and need remedial work before they can start the 100-level courses. And so even though we have students who are doing very well in their MCAS, when we send students on, as of 2012, for example, roughly a quarter of the students going to public colleges needed some remedial work before they could move on. That's something we need to be aware of. That's something we need to focus on, and it is, it highlights the fact that the MCAS scores don't tell us the whole story. We talk about what our graduation rates are, which are extremely high. We talk about how many of our students go on to college, which is also very high. Basically, of our graduating seniors, at this point, it's over 95% who are going on to higher education. But an important question that I think we should keep our eye on has to do with what happens to them afterwards. How many persist in college for at least two years? This is what persistently enrolled in college means. And how many obtain a degree within six years? There is a fall-off from that, and that is something we need to be aware of. It has to do with how good our recommendations are. It lets us reflect on whether we should be sending everyone to college or whether the ones who are going to college are adequately prepared. These are numbers that I think are definitely worth us paying attention to. In fact, when I look at what this boils down to, if someone graduating from Shrewsbury High School who enters college, their six-year graduation rate is over 85%, which is considerably higher than the statistics that are given nationally, or certainly higher than the state as a whole. So that is, is, is good. It's impressive, but it also means that 1 in 7 people who we have going on to college is encountering tuition fees and other expenses and not obtaining a degree within six years. Worth looking at. Per pupil expenses, we all follow. You see what happened in 2015 when we passed the override in 2014, and it gives us an idea as to the trend rate of expenses going up. But also, associated with that is this red line, which is the difference between how we start the year off and we start the year off and ask for funding for our schools, and in general, we ask for what amounts to level services. There are some instances in which we, in addition to that, ask for the return of something that might have been taken away in the past. But virtually every year, there's a red line there. There is a million to $2 million that we need to cut from the budget and cut from our services in many instances. If we look at the operating budget, again, trying to get at the big picture here and let people know that the town appropriated budget contains state aid, and also that the town appropriated budget does not include the entire operating budget. So whereas the town appropriated budget may be in the mid $60 million range, the overall operating budget is in the vicinity of mid $80 million range, and we include other sources of funding for our schools. And if people have questions as to where the dollars go, this gives us a sense, divided into, I believe it's 11 categories, of where the dollars go. People can quickly see the proportion that goes to different services. They can also see where the variability is and understand when the costs go up, what is behind it. And often, there are a lot of things behind it, that there's no one expense that is responsible for this, but this is a good way of transmitting that information. If people need fine detail, we can design this electronically so they could click on that graphic and get the tables that have the further information that lies behind the graph. And then class size percent over guideline, we saw what happened in 2014 up here, and what it caused with regard to a crisis in just our school system that led to a resolution of this or an improvement of this with the override. But we can also see that this line is now flat, that it is starting to go up again. And if we are to learn from the crisis that led to the override back in 2014, we should be able to make some predictions before we get to the crisis level. Also, what I find to be an obtainable and interesting bit of information has to do with the number of nursing visits for psych, social reasons, which they do track in our system. And if we're concerned about social, emotional stability and health, then this is something else we can put on our radar screen and keep an eye on. And again, we see something going up there. If we look at services that are cut, a lot of this dates back to around 2004, 2005, when things started to get tighter within the system, when the expenses started to go up, and when some of the funding sources started to taper off. And we can see that certain things were done in response to this to try to balance the budget, and we may not remember that there was a time when we had elementary school foreign language, that we had a vocational program that included state grads, we eliminated auto shop, we did add an advanced math coach, which besides improving the service here did cut down the referrals to charter schools. There was a late bus that made things a little bit easier for those taking activities after school. And other changes that have occurred. In addition, this may be one place for us to draw attention to the fact that there are a variety of fees that people encounter when sending their children to the public schools here. And this is one way of displaying it, although I wish there was an easier way to display this that people could explore. But the notion that things have gone away and not come back, the idea of aiming for level services, of not adding any more red lines to this graph is one way of approaching it. Now, out-of-district students, this is another thing that we can track, and there are three sources of that that are main in our radar. This may not be that important to the average person looking at a school report, but as a member of the school committee, these are things that I would like to see regarding how many students we send to vocational school, how many are going to charter schools, and out-of-district special ed, and what trends there are there. Those affect our budget, and they also give us a signal regarding the services that we offer in the district. Now, part of the question is, are other districts doing anything along these lines? Do we have anything to learn from others? And I've gone through the dark districts, the 10 other districts that we are compared with by the state, or felt to be, for a variety of reasons, similar to us. And many do not have anything specifically like that. Wachusett has something that is rather text-based and takes a while to read. Natick, Burlington, and Belmont are basically leading to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website and the tables that exist there. Arlington is using a commercial product, which actually, Mr. Collins, Dr. Sawyer, and I are going to preview tomorrow to see what kind of services they need. The company is called ClearGov. And to give you a sense as to what that looks like, we've got Arlington right here. They're, they, it's a very professional product. They give an overall rating of performance. You can go back a few years, back from 2016 to 2012. They trend things graphically over time. They will let you know what percent graduate. You can click on these various tabs to see the graduation rates for different groups. And they give an MCAS analysis, which is very good. They give the growth percentile, which trends over time, and again, allows you to get a better picture. You can change your MCAS analysis based on student group, you can change it based on grade. So again, you can get a finer view. And they have an SAT analysis here, which looks pretty nice, scoring over time. They look at advanced placement courses and their performance, and again, trend over time. And so this is their product. It offers a lot, very professional-looking, from my point of view, and I look forward to previewing it further with Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins tomorrow. I will say there are a couple of concerns that I would have. One is that I think it's really important for this district to provide, to present to the public in a clear, graphic way, the services that we provide, not just the results. And this does not have that. Their source of information is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So things such as nursing visits, class size, course offerings would not be in the mix for this. And I think that in so much as we need to make the public aware of any changes in services, if one of our goals is to have people feel that a priority is providing services at at least the level that we had a year before, then we need to let people know what changes in services exist. This is nonetheless one option that is out there that gives you an idea as to what they look like. Escape? Thank you. Zoom. Okay. And, there. So basically, I want to put services on the front burner for everybody in this community. I want them easily reviewable by people who are thinking about a budget. I want them easily reviewable by the public at large. I want the information to be simplified and to take advantage of electronic formats as possible, and enable us to have more effective public engagement. The assumption that the public only responds to a crisis gets us nowhere we want to be. And we all experienced what led up to the override that occurred in 2014, and hopefully, moving forward, we can be able to provide an approach that is less crisis-oriented than they. So that's what I've got to say, and happy to discuss this with you. If you want to come back to the table and we can chat a little bit, but I thought it was important to take this moment and talk and see what thoughts you have. All right. So Collins, any thoughts on this? Sandy?
Yeah, thank you. I think, well, I know you put a lot of work into doing this. We've talked about it a little before at one of our workshops, and I think Erin raised a really good point, talking about, you know, how does that translate into the classroom, you know? And I think you have to go from A to B to understand what is happening in our classrooms today, and looking at trends and doing that kind of analysis and providing information for the public is really important. And some of us are visual learners, some of us want to have all that detail and understand, you know, every single line item. So providing this type of dashboard is great, because it enables you to get what you want in a format that you want. And I also think engaging the public as every step of the way, and not just at a crisis point, is more bang for our buck, because we know with that last override, it was a significant amount of education in helping people understand why we were in the situation we were in, why we needed the dollar amount that we needed. So I see this as like the part two of what you and John Samia started last year. So I like it, I think it's a lot of work. I would like to see it move forward, but I know that we do have constraints with people's times and so forth, but I think it's a great thing to start.
Comments? John?
I think it's a great idea. I think making information more accessible to the public is always good. Similar to Sandy's last comment, I guess I'd be curious about the administrative level of effort involved in building something like this, but at the same time, I see a tremendous value. You know, we see a lot of reports, a lot of presentations, a lot of performance metrics over the course of a school year. To have it all kind of funneled into a dashboard, I think, would be helpful, because, you know, we're going to, we need to educate the public every year, and to have something for them to take away, or a website to go to where they can kind of click and look around and understand the health of the school district, I think is important.
Erin?
Yeah, following up what John was saying, that having consistency is helpful, having the same kind of outlook for each category that you were talking about year over year, I think is beneficial. Again, I'd highlight that the points that were brought up, it's just exactly who's going to do it and the timeframe of it, and what kind of cost. So, but again, those are all part of, when you're making a decision, all those are all the elements to be considered.
Jason?
I applaud any effort to present innovation about our budgeting process and our broader financial situation to the public in a manner that is simple and digestible. As you mentioned, we, and in particular, our staff, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, do a fantastic job of laying out all of the details, anybody who wants that level of information. But sometimes, that level of detail can obscure the big picture. We're showing people the trees and not the forest, so to speak. And I think that for folks who don't have a background in municipal finance or government finance, they may not recognize some very basic concepts, from, you know, who controls the ability to raise revenue in the community, to how much of our funding comes from state and other sources, to how much of our expenditures are legally encumbered, and over which we have every little discretion one way or another. I applaud any effort to get that information out there. I would echo comments with regard to, you know, making sure that this can be handled in a way that is relatively not burdensome to administer. I do acknowledge and appreciate the level of work that you as chair have done on this project, and have certainly expressed a willingness to do a lot of that yourself, and I applaud and appreciate that. The last comment that I would make is, as we explore different electronic avenues to communicate this information, something that would be a particular priority of mine would be customizability. You mentioned a limitation of ClearGov would be, you know, the extent to which we could decide what information goes into there. Schuylkill obviously has a very unique story, we're a very unique community with a very unique history that goes a lot farther back than many people realize, and I would certainly like to make sure that we, we were using an electronic product to tell the story, that we have every ability to tell our story, as opposed to something a little bit more generic. But I applaud the effort.
Yeah. I've spent a few years sort of looking at budgets and trying to understand our situation a little bit more, and about three things come to mind. One is, we need to find a very simple way to present the complex idea of these school budgets. The second is, we need to be able to tell a story, just like Erin has said in the past, because not everyone responds to numbers. And the third is that we need to move the focus to the service that we have. That the purpose of a budget is to provide a service. And so the priority should be the service, and certainly, you know, when you've gone, in my opinion, you know you've gone too far with budget cutting when you get to the point of service cutting. And that we need to move the focus, basically, to the services that we are providing. The purpose of all of this is to provide a service, and so those are the things that come to mind. So finding a narrative as well as data sets is also important. Dr. Sawyer?
Thanks. Just a few reactions, and I underscore many of the points that committee members made. The, you know, the one key piece, of course, is around capacity, and Dr. McGee mentioned this webinar that we're going to look at tomorrow for the ClearGov product. If there are products that are cost-effective, that can help do some of that work, that would take data and put it into a visual form that is understandable and useful, that's a decision we can make, certainly in terms of whether the expenditure, there's always going to be opportunity cost, of course, in terms of if we make those kinds of investments, and I'll be curious to see what the cost is, but that would certainly be helpful, because we are certainly limited when it comes to HR resources as well as technology resources to start crafting and creating things on our own to a degree. If this is something that the school committee tasks us with, we'll endeavor to think about what we think is irresponsible and reasonable timeline to produce something, and that meets the needs and the charge that we're given. But I agree with the concept that having something akin to a dashboard that can be a useful communication tool is a really worthy goal for the committee and for the administration, for the school department. In terms of the, you know, what we choose to measure, I think lots of the things that Dr. McGee displayed are things that we do show at different times and different reports over the years, and to consolidate them perhaps into one place, where year over year, you can see trends. I think it could be particularly useful. I'd want to make sure that, as we have that conversation, that we're measuring, you know, certainly what we think is important to us relative to different pieces, really looking at what our portion of a graduate is telling us is important, what our concentration priorities. And there may be some things that change over time in terms of areas that we're focusing, but not to make that so broad that, again, this gets lost in the forest of lots and lots of different information. For me, from a perspective of someone who'd be charged with reacting or responding to this data, you know, whether it's actionable, I do find the statistics that are presented relative to graduation rates of college, you know, five or six years old, interesting. Dr. McGee mentioned that's, you know, the last time they posted it was 2012, which means those were kids who graduated from high school in 2006. So in terms of trying to draw conclusions as to what we were doing in 2006 that may have had some correlation, and I'm sensitive, I'm certainly fine with being accountable for performance, but I also would be, our portfolio in terms of what we're accountable for as a public school district continues to expand over time, and to start signaling to the community that there are going to be things that we're going to be trying to be accountable for that are far out in the future, where there's lots of other factors and variables from the time a student might leave us by the time. That's something that I'd want to be cautious about in terms of what we might take on. But again, it can tell a story and give us an indicator of certain things that we're doing. And then finally, in terms of the, I saw something, I'll paraphrase it, I was reading the other night, relative to, school districts spend an awful lot of time measuring what kids are doing, and sometimes, and oftentimes probably, not asking them how they're doing. And I think that that's something that we are doing well in a variety of ways, and have done more recently, I think a thought exchange process, where we had literally thousands upon thousands of comments from students around what they felt of comments from students around what they felt was important, and that's a tool, that's one tool we can continue to use, there are other ways as well. But there may be a place in this kind of approach where, you know, the reaction or the responses of our constituents, whether those are parents, whether those are community members, whether those are our students or our faculty and staff, and maybe there are some consistent things that we're asking over time, and we can start to create some trends, or see some trend lines in terms of how people perceive we're doing around certain key elements. So those are a few responses. I also want to thank Dr. McGee for the amount of time and effort that he's put into this, because that is something that we haven't had the capacity certainly to do in recent weeks and months. And I think that something very positive and useful will come out of this work. I think the key is going to be defining what that is, and how soon, and how we might go about doing that, what sort of tools we might use. But certainly, we're willing to work with the committee to try to find something that's going to be as useful as possible.
Any other comments? I would say the narrative piece of this gets at, you know, getting away from the measuring and telling the story, and finding ways to do that, whether it's video or whatever, is going to be another gunny way in part to this. Well, thank you. Moving on, we're at the approval of minutes portion of our session here. You have before you the minutes from the February 28 meeting. Are there any additions, solutions, or corrections? Okay, seeing none, without objection, we remark those as accepted. Next, we need to go into an executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining of the Shrewsbury Professional Association. Having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the committee's ability to negotiate, on the committee's negotiating position, and the committee will reconvene in open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. This is a roll call vote.
Dr. McGee, just, did you receive some minutes potentially to review?
Potential approval of minutes?
Right.
So we would add to the executive session, in addition to negotiations, approval of minutes from a previous executive session. Thank you. We need a roll call vote. Jason?
Aye.
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 All of us have. Thank you.